Arc time, arch. Holy guard, halt. Present, colors. Harry, colors. Arc time, arch. Forward, arch.
Can you please be seated? So, welcome to the North Torrance Homeowners Association Candidates Forum. My name is Mary Ann Humada. I am the President Pro Tempore, and I will be moderating this evening. I'd like to recognize those out there, the City Councilmen, Kurt Weiderman. I'd like to also introduce the North Torrance Homeowners Association Board of Directors. See, Brandon Matson, who's the Second Vice President. Brandon? Oh, he's right there. Brandon. Glenn Terry, who's our Treasurer. Zora Muhammad, who's our Director-at-Large. Frances Romero, who's also our Director-at-Large. Jesse Negrete, who's the North Torrance HOA Representative for the Torrance Unified School District Citizens Oversight Committee. And Rita Anderson, who's our Secretary. At the table is our Treasurer's report. If you'd like to take a look at that, you're welcome to. So, as the moderator, my job is to keep the event running smoothly. I'm not a censor, and I do not decide whether or not items are true, true or not true. Okay? We're just going to make sure that this runs smooth. And if you would appreciate, if we would please hold your applause until the end, that would be greatly appreciated, so that we can run the process through this. So, we have Rita and Becky, who are our questionnaires, and they will begin the process.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement, and we'll start with Mr. Herring.
Thank you. And Emma Oon? This on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you to the North Torrance Homeowners Association for hosting this forum. And I want to thank the North High ROTC for the presenting of the colors. My name is Newton Herring, and I'm asking for your vote. I'm a retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel, and I served two combat tours in the Middle East. My wife and I moved our family to Torrance about 25 years ago for basically three reasons. We were very impressed at Torrance and its safe community, an excellent school system, and was a, had a robust housing market. Those things were very important to us 25 years ago, and they are very important to us today. And as I talk to residents while I'm walking the precincts, I find that these things are very important to the residents today. So, basically, I'm running to make sure that Torrance remains a very viable and a beautiful city that it has been for so many years, for families to want to relocate here, stay here, and to raise their families, and when they grow old in their senior years, that this will still be a city that's favorable for senior citizens. I have a track record of proven ethical leadership, serving first on the Traffic Commission, and then now serving on the Planning Commission. And while I was deployed, I served as a Command Chaplain and was responsible for some 7,000 troops throughout the country of Kuwait. I know how to submit and review multimillion-dollar budgets, and I will bring my values of duty, honor, and courage as I give back to a city that has given so much to me and my family. I believe that the future of Torrance is bright, but moving forward, we need leaders with the right mix of leadership, experience, and tenacity to move this city forward in the pathway of growth and possibility. As the Planning Commissioner, my time is up, but I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Mr. Rizzo, you're next.
Can you hear me? Good evening. I'd like to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association for holding this forum tonight. I am Councilman Jeff Rizzo, and I am running for reelection to the Torrance City Council. I'm a lifelong Torrance resident, married with two adult children, and living in the same Southwood home my parents purchased in 1955. In that home, I raised my family and worked my way through college, earning my master's degree in public administration while working full-time and volunteering in the community through my church and as a youth sports coach. A short 22 months ago, I promised that I would dedicate myself to ensuring that Torrance would remain a vibrant and thriving community. I focused on issues such as public safety, economic development, and our quality of life. I'm proud to say that I've kept those promises. Public safety, and in particular our children, have been safeguarded through the addition of school crossing guards. Business is booming. The city licensed over 1,100 new businesses within the last year. Long-awaited infrastructure projects are underway, including the revotation of roadways and new water wells, as well as the reduction of blight within our community through the regulation of unattended donation bins. But there's still much more work to be done in public safety, addressing the issues at the refinery, in economic development, attracting and retaining new businesses, in our quality of life, and protecting our heritage with an old Torrance infused for Hillside residents, just to name a few. As a current City Councilman, former Planning Commissioner, retired Torrance Police Lieutenant, I have over 30 years of experience and firsthand knowledge of city government operations. I have balanced, complex budgets and resolve issues through collaborative problem-solving. I possess the necessary leadership and organizational skills to address the pending issues before this community while continuing to keep Torrance a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Next, Ms. Campbell D'Agostino.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association, of which I am a member, for giving me the time to speak about my campaign for Torrance City Council. I'm running for City Council because I believe I have the experience and the skills necessary to help lead our city forward. I'm excited about the future of Torrance. So, with the steady leadership of our mayor and City Council, Torrance is thriving. New businesses are opening their doors every day. The Del Amo Mall has undergone an amazing transformation. Our city services are stronger than ever, but we need continued leadership to ensure our city stays on the right path. My husband, John, and I moved to Torrance 18 years ago, and in that time, I've owned a small business, served on the Torrance Commission on Aging, the South Bay Council of Governments Working Group for Senior Services, the 2010 Census Complete Count Committee, and the Torrance Strategic Plan for Transit. My background's in finance, and I hold an MBA in Quantitative Analysis from Pepperdine University. I know how to drill through budgets and ferret out wasteful spending. But that's not all I can do. As a small business owner, I'm active in the Torrance Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the only candidate who's actively recruiting new businesses to come to Torrance. In fact, last week, I was in Washington, D.C., representing Torrance with a bipartisan delegation of business and civic leaders from L.A. County who met with our elected representatives to help shape the regional economy. Next month, I'll be in Sacramento doing the same thing. Bringing new business to Torrance is the key to maintaining the wonderful services that we enjoy. It takes a business owner to know how to attract and keep businesses, and I have that ability, and I intend to get things done if you elect me to Torrance City Council.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Griffiths.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association as well for hosting this event this evening. It's been an honor to serve as your Torrance City Council member. As a 33-year resident of Torrance, I'm committed to giving back to this great city. I raised my family here. My two sons, now 23 and 25, attended Torrance Public Schools. Two of the main reasons people want to live in Torrance is our schools and our safe neighborhoods. Over the past 20 years, I have served our community as a volunteer with the Torrance YMCA and the Torrance Salvation Army, raising money in our community for children's programs and helping seniors get the support they need most. I am proud to now serve on the executive boards of both of those organizations. I'm also the candidate with the longest history of service on city commissions, serving most recently on the Planning Commission, as well as eight years on the Environmental Commission. This service helped prepare me for my work as a member of our City Council, and my work on City Council has given the voters a clear record of where I stand on the most important issues in Torrance. My background in business serves me well as a City Council member. I founded, successfully grew, and after 15 years, I sold my multimillion-dollar computer sales and consulting business. As a City Council member, using those business skills, I have made a consistent effort to market and promote Torrance. No other candidate has a more extensive business background. As a Torrance City Council member, I have been praised for my commitment to integrity and independent leadership. I also want to mention with the news yesterday that the refinery is planning to restart on Saturday evening. I know that many people in the community are concerned about it, and certainly, my number-one concern is the health and safety of our residents. We've been given assurances by the AQMD that this startup will not endanger public health, but ExxonMobil should know that we are watching their every step and that we are engaging all agencies that have jurisdiction over the refinery. ExxonMobil or the refinery's new owners will have to work very hard to earn the trust of this community going forward. Tonight, I hope to share with you some of the work I have done on City Council and to hear from you how our city can serve, how I can serve you better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herring.
I want to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association also for hosting this event. I am a scientist. I have a PhD in physics. I am married, raising two children through Torrance schools. In addition, I've got 35-plus years' experience in the national security space industry, supporting the U.S. Air Force Space Command at the Los Angeles Air Force Base in El Segundo. I've worked as part of many teams to solve important problems and resolve critical issues to protect all Americans. As a scientist, I will bring a fresh, new, and I believe valuable technical and scientific perspective to our city government. My civic activities also differ from my colleagues. The civic efforts I'm most proud of are to be, have been, part of citizen groups to preserve our quality of life in Torrance. I hate to think what our neighborhood would have become if we had a noisy, smelly, 24/7 industrial facility on one side, a criminal rehabilitation center on the other side, and massively polluted air above us, all of which I helped to stop. Now is the time for me to try to extend this kind of effort to all of Torrance. Why? Because of the massive 2015 ExxonMobil refinery explosion. It's a game changer. It should have never happened in a million years, yet it happened in 60. The Federal U.S. Chemical Safety Board still has not determined all the potential root causes and corrective actions that need to be put in place. It is something that citizen groups alone cannot fix. That's why I'm running for City Council. I'm not for closing the refinery, but I believe I'm the right person to work with the refinery to establish a path forward that is protective of our public health and safety. Also, I believe my technical and scientific perspective will help the City Council make better and more informed decisions on a bunch of complex issues that will face our city. I ask for your support. I ask for your help. I ask for your vote on June 7th. If elected, I will work every day to continue to earn your trust and confidence for the betterment of all Torrance. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. I want to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association. I want to thank the candidates. I want to thank you for being here. It is an honor to meet you. It will be an honor to serve you as well. Currently, I'm serving this community as a Civil Service Commissioner. Before that, I was a Library Commissioner. I'm also a School Side Council at Casimir Middle School. I'm also one of the four members of Loan Review Committee at Local Federal Credit Union. I'm also a captain for local tennis team. I earned my first MBA in 1991. I got my second MBA in 2002. I also went to UCLA for my accounting certificate. And I have proven record of hard work and perseverance. I work at American Honda Motor Company. I've been with them for 19 years. Currently, I hold the position of Senior Financial Analyst at American Honda Motor Company. I used to be an auditor for American Honda, going different states, auditing different dealers for their compliance audit. My platform is simple, to maintain the quality of our life, to have safety in our schools, and also the economic development, and have infrastructure development. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank, God bless you, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Okay, we're going to begin our questions now. The first question. In a hypothetical scenario, if within your first month as a council member, you were told to decide which street in North Torrance the city should immediately upgrade, which street would you choose, and why? The street cannot be Crenshaw, Hawthorne, or Prairie. We're going to begin with Mr. Rizzo.
182nd Street. Are you drilling on it lately?
You're done? Okay. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you. One of the streets that I've actually spent a lot of time looking at is 177th Street. It's a cut-through street that comes right out of the South Bay Galleria. It's in bad shape from the damage from the trees there, and I've worked with the residents on 177th to try to protect as many trees as possible. The city has plans to redo that street, and it's long overdue. The sidewalks are a horrible mess. The streets are in terrible shape, and the water won't drain off the street. But we need to try to preserve the trees there as well, because that adds tremendous value to that neighborhood. So, 177th gets my vote, and I also hope that the city will do more to try to keep the traffic calm in that street because of the fact that people tend to treat it like a freeway.
Thank you. Mr. Shea.
In fact, I was driving today, multiple streets, and I thought of which street should give the first preference. And I thought of Redondo Street. I think Redondo Beach, Redondo Street is pretty dingy, and especially going towards the freeway, it's really bad shape. And I compared this with other streets. I think 182nd is better than Redondo, so I think Redondo is the one that we need more. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Herring?
As a Traffic Commissioner, we looked at 182nd as a corridor in terms of upgrading it, looking at some streetscape medium improvement, and looking at possible ways of repaving that corridor. That is a very vital corridor in Torrance, and not only the street, but the traffic light. We have a missing left turn traffic light at the intersection of 182nd and Prairie. I'd like to see one put, so, at 182nd Street and Crenshaw, and look at widening that street going onto the 405 freeway. So, my street as well, that I would give some immediate attention to, would be 182nd Street.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Campbell D'Agostino?
182nd Street. That's a cut-through street. It needs paving. It needs a lot of work. And believe me, I can see a lot of people getting flat tires driving on that street.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
Yeah, I'm going to have to vote for 182nd Street also. This is pretty simple.
All right, well then, let's get the people to work on that. Okay, for question number two. In light of AB 109 and Prop 47, both of which have placed owners' demands on municipalities and local law enforcement agencies, and with an uptick in crime the past year, what will you do to ensure North Torrance is a safe place to live? And we're going to start with Mr. Griffiths.
Great, thank you. AB 109, Prop 47 have been serious issues affecting our community now for quite some time, and that's directly the reason why crime has been on the increase throughout our city, not just in North Torrance. Our police force is well in tune with the issues regarding the problems with AB 109 and Prop 47. They know how to try to get the best possible convictions for criminals that they do catch committing crimes, so that they can serve the longest amount of time. But we need to be extra diligent. One of the things that the City Council needs to be more involved in is trying to lobby the state to get more funding to support our police department to make up for the failures of our state in housing and keeping the prisoners in jail and properly convicted of their crimes. So, that's a big thing that we should do. Our police force, I think, does a really outstanding job overall, and I think that they understand the issue. The See Something Safe, Something program is another valuable program that we all need to be proud of.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
It has had an effect on the safety in the communities. One of the big issues we're facing here with Torrance now is we're about 20 to 22 bodies down on the police department. So, we're down personnel on the police department. So, we needed a concerted effort to bring our police department back up to speed so we have officers out on the street and get them back out on the patrol to work with those issues. The department does, in fact, have some programs to work with the community supervisor lease prisoners that are out there on the street, but again, it requires manpower. And we need to push that effort, get our officers, get our department up to speed, engage in some hiring to get those bodies back out on the street.
Thank you. Mr. Herring, you're next.
As a 28-year military man, a veteran who proudly served this country, I know how important it is to have a strong military to keep our country safe. I also know how important it is to have a strong police force to keep our community safe. And Torrance is a very safe community, but we have seen an uptick in crime, especially cat burglaries. There are three things that I think that we need to look at and focus on that. Our first is the retiring, retirement. We have a lot of our officers coming up on retirement. We do have some vacancies that we need to look at replacing there. The second is recruiting. We need to do a better job. I sat down and had a couple of conversations with Police Chief Mark Metzuda about recruiting and looking at making Torrance the place of destination and retention. And so, when we talk about finding the best to serve, those men and women who put on the uniform and put in their lives on the line, and we need to pay them accordingly when it comes to pay and also retirement benefits. So, we do that, Torrance will remain a very safe community.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Mr. Shea?
Thank you. I believe we have to involve our Assemblymen. We have to talk to the state coordinators. We have to make sure that they are aware of the situation. I have been in touch with a lot of local business owners, and every single local business owner is being effective with this AB 109 and Prop 47. We have to support police officers. However, sometimes, especially in this case, police officers are very discouraged, and they feel that this is the one that needs attention all the way at the top level. And like I said, everything starts at the local level. We have to involve Assemblymen. We have to talk to other congressmen and take it all the way to the next level and bring it to the attention and have a little change in this. That's the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
I think that, you know, you have to obey the state law. It costs a lot of money to incarcerate people. But studies have shown that a lot of the people that cause crimes that are released are people who have drug problems or mental health problems. A lot of them may be veterans who have PTSD. And I'm very pleased that Torrance has a new Social Services Commission to help mitigate that problem and that the police will send people to that organization. Homelessness has gone down in our communities, and so, I think police are an important component of it. I think they do an excellent job. But I think we need to have more services to take people into mental health and drug rehabilitation so they don't commit crimes, because those are where most of the crimes actually come from.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Campbell D'Agostino, it's time to end.
Well, while I was in Washington, D.C., I brought this up to some of our elected representatives, and surprisingly, a lot of people have brought it up because of the crime increase in California. And one of the things I did find out was appropriations have been made for some grants for cities to apply for to help in this problem. Of course, this is a statewide program, so we're going to have to also lobby our representatives in Sacramento, which I'll be bringing up probably in the next two weeks. I do believe it's a difficult situation, hiring police officers now. Not a lot of people want to become police officers, but we must continue. We are down at least 20-some officers here in Torrance, and that's not helping the situation. But I think having the additional funding that we can apply for out of Washington, D.C. will give us some breathing room.
Okay, next question. Comment on the safety situation at the ExxonMobil Torrance Refinery. How will you work with government agencies and the new refinery operators to promote safety and good community corporate relations for the city? And we're going to start with Ms. Campbell D'Agostino.
Yes, I served on the Torrance and ExxonMobil Citizens Advisory Panel a couple of years ago, and I think they need to bring that panel into the new PBF owners, of course. And I believe that Torrance has to work more closely with the AQMD and CalOSHA and all of the regulatory agencies to make sure that everything is safe for the citizens and also in the air pollution situation. But I do believe that the new owners have been spoken to, and they seem cooperative, and we want to have a safe community and a breathable air.
Thank you. Mr. Shea?
Thank you. This is one of the topics that the entire city of Torrance is unite. Everybody wants to have safety in their neighborhoods. And my take is that we have to talk to the new owner, and we make sure that they comply with all the regulations. As any big organizations, they are liable for internal compliance. I would encourage and I would push hard to the Exxon to make sure they have all kind of internal audit, as well as unbiased auditors to get audited, get audited. It's important for the community. It is important for their own safety. It is important for everybody, everybody's safety that's taken. And I would ask them, we have to make sure they're all comply with all the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening statements, the safety of the refinery and any industrial facility in our city that handles dangerous things is top priority, and we should treat it that way, and I think we have. I know personally, I've met with the current ExxonMobil executives, as well as the new executives from PBF Energy, and I feel really good, especially about the PBF Energy folks, that they're going to treat this as, their number-one issue is making sure that this refinery runs well, runs safely. And I do believe, because this is their sole business, that they're going to do a good job of that. Unlike ExxonMobil, PBF Energy does nothing but refining. So, ExxonMobil refining is just a small percentage of their business, and they were already two steps out the door when this explosion happened. I'm really looking forward to the new organization coming in, and I've had many assurances from the new folks that they're going to work extra hard to do a good job in our community. And one of the first questions I asked is how are they going to be more involved in our community like ExxonMobil has actually been in helping our schools? And they assured me that they will be just like ExxonMobil has done.
Thank you. Did anyone want to use their YOLO card on this particular question?
All right, then we go to the next question. How will you work to ensure that parks and... How will you work to ensure that parks in North Torrance are maintained and safe for the community to use? We'll start with Mr. Herring.
I will continue to, I will work with Mr. Jones, who's doing an excellent job over Parks and Recreation. I have visited most of the parks in the city of Torrance and in North Torrance. And I've observed that some of our parks are in disrepair in terms of the equipment that's there. And we need monies and fundings to designate to parks and equipment at some parks to keep them safe and keep them where the children can go play on them without being hurt. So, we just continue to work with our staff as a councilperson, make sure that the budgets, when the budget is reviewed, that we have funds designated to improve our parks and recreation areas throughout the city of Torrance.
Thank you. Ms. Camille DeGastino.
Well, I was very excited when McMaster Park finally opened up in North Torrance. That's going to be your new crown jewel. And I believe your senior center that's going to be opening pretty soon up there at McMaster Park is going to afford a lot of opportunities for our senior citizens. And we have to make sure we do have the funding for the programs there and also the park. And once again, it's community development and John Jones that we're going to have to work with.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
Again, just working with John Jones and his crew at the City and Community Services to stay on top of the parks. We have seen some progress. McMaster Park, again, beautiful site. And we have some improvements being made in Columbia Park. We have the bocce ball courts going into Columbia. And it's just a matter of, again, receiving input from the community. When we get, you know, somebody complains about any problems at the parks, staying on top of it, see what we can do to resolve those issues. And then, ensure that during our budgetary process that we make sure that we have enough money to deal with the issues at the parks as it comes forward to make the improvements where they are needed.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Mr. Eng.
Yeah, I think that certainly it's a matter of priority of funding for things. And the budget should be worked to put some extra money there because it's probably needed. And in terms of safety, I think was the other part of the question. I think you could just have some additional police patrols, talk to the community around there and have additional, make notices for people to go and call the police or to see if they see anything that's around the area. And I think that would be the easiest way to improve the situation. Whenever there's communities involved and they watch things, the criminals tend to go somewhere else.
Thank you. And Mr. Griffiths, your turn.
Great, thank you. We on the council in the last two years have approved many, many projects for improving our parks throughout the city. Obviously, McMaster Park, as was mentioned, is a recent upgrade that we completely redid. And those are the types of things that we want to do. I know our Community Services Department has done an outreach in the community asking the residents of the community to prioritize the issues and concerns you have with the parks so that we can then, as a council, come back and prioritize what, how we want to spend the money in our parks. Another thing that I know the council has done is we've approved improved lighting. I know that that's being implemented throughout the parks. I'm not sure if it's been to every park yet. But I know that lighting improvements, it certainly will benefit safety. When the parks are well-lit, it makes it a lot safer for the residents to feel comfortable walking at night and in the evenings. And certainly, having regular police patrols on a continuing basis is very important.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Sheikh.
Thank you. We have 33 parks in the city of Torrance. And I think we spent 6% of our budget on these parks. And I think we need to increase that budget minimally, especially the lightnings. Wilson Park behind the tennis courts, their space there is really dingy. And I think we've got to spend some money and effort to fix those areas. They look really ugly and not inviting for the community. And those are easy fixes. Work on the lighting, make sure they're clean, the toilets are clean. And these are easy fixes. We already have fixed expense. We already have resources. We just have to make sure that resources are used efficiently. And that's probably the easy fix to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question. What will you do to bring the alley metro green line extension to Torrance and to help improve traffic flow and congestion in the city? We're going to start with Mr. Rizzo.
Well, to help bring the extension down, we're working with the Metro Board to bring the green line extension down into Torrance. We're pushing to have the start of that move from 2037 to 2018. So, hopefully, we can get some progress moving forward on that in bringing that green line extension down to the New Transit Center on Crenshaw Boulevard. And as far as improving traffic flow in the city, that is a matter of, again, bringing the green line down to where we can establish parking rights in various locations in the city and increasing what I like to refer to as internal circulators in the city that run on a more regular basis for individuals. Once they park their car, whether they come to work or live in the city, don't have to walk fire grab an internal circulator.
Thank you. Ms. Camille DeGastino.
We need to be working pretty closely with our South Bay Council of Governments on this. I believe they have an agenda for us. And they can exert the power, really, to bring up the priority of the projects. Right now, the priority for the extension in the metro line is not very high on the list. But with, working with the South Bay COG, they can exert the pressure with Metro to move that up. Also, I believe on the ballot coming up is a one-cent tax to improve, actually, the transportation. And I believe if that passes, that that will really help in our transportation issue. I am working with the COG.
Thank you. Mr. Eng.
Yeah, I think it's good that it's gone down from 2037 to 2016 for bringing the green line. But that has to be coordination between the Torrance government and all the other agencies. And things tend to move slowly. But I appreciate the progress that Torrance City Council's already done. For traffic flow, I think one of the things in general in traffic is that you can always continue to adjust the lights for intersections that seem to get crowded. It's not for the green line impact. The other thing that I applaud the city for is that Torrance buses now go to the adjacent communities, a lot more of them. I think there should be increased coordination between all the cities for bus service so that a person can actually get from here to other places in the South Bay through some kind of more combined organized system.
Thank you. Did anyone want to use their yellow card on that one? Before we just go on. Okay, the next question has something to do with the city's regulatory process. What involvement should residents be allowed to have should they object to a neighbor who chooses to keep chickens and/or bees on his or her property? We're going to start with Ms. Camille DeGastino.
Well, right now, there is an ordinance for keeping chickens. So, I believe it's a limit of three. So, there are some regulations already set up for that process. In regards to the bees, I don't believe they were going to be doing too much regulation on that. If there were people keeping bees, I believe that they were doing it safely. And I don't believe you need to over-regulate that.
Thank you. Mr. Herring.
As a planning commissioner, I know how important it is that neighbors get along with each other. As a planning commissioner, we have a lot of issues coming before the commission where neighbors are really pitted against one another. The council has recently adopted an ordinance for chickens and looking at an ordinance for bees. And I don't believe, I may be misled on this, but I don't believe that there's a requirement to have neighbors sign off on the ordinance. I mean, on allowing their, if someone wants to have chickens in their home. But I believe that neighbors ought to have a says-to about that, especially if it comes to an issue of allergies or it comes to an issue of smell, noise. Certainly, it's a factor, those kinds of things. And we already have some noise ordinances in the city that we have to abide by. So, the short answer to that is that there's an ordinance, but I believe that neighbors still ought to have input. And we ought to find ways to be neighborly and get along with one another.
Thank you. Mr. Eng, you're.
Yes, I believe that definitely the neighbor should always be able to be involved in things that potentially affect them. And sometimes, it does pit neighbor against neighbors. But I think the resolution process through the planning commissioner or any other commission should be to encourage the neighbors to try to find a resolution of those things. But it's, I think, a good idea to have that door always open. And I think the chicken ordinance has restrictions. I think they're sensible. Bees, bees can fly in different places. They can set up hives far away from where you originally intend them to be. So, I think that definitely is a good idea for regulation. We had a whole bunch of bees one or two houses down. And they actually were an unintentional bee colony. So, I think it's a good idea to regulate bees in some sense because they can sting some people. Some people are very sensitive.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
Well, the city currently has, and we've adopted an ordinance for the keeping of bees and an ordinance for the keeping of chickens, which allows up to four hens, no roosters. Both ordinances require a special animal permit. And in those special animal permit requirements and subsequent rules and regulations contained within those ordinances, there is feedback allowed from residents or the neighbors if it concerns whether the special animal permit is going to be issued for bees or issued for chickens.
Thank you. Mr. Sheikh.
Thank you. And I think planning commission as well as City Council has done a good job in ordinance for this regulation. I don't think we need to over-regulate that. I met a lot of people while walking down the precincts. And I met a few people, they had this concern. But everyone said that we are law-abiding citizens. And if we have any guidance, we will follow that. And I think City Council has done a great job in designing and explaining what the ordinance is. And I think that's, we should not over-regulate that. It's the way it is, is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Griffiths.
Thank you. I've been involved in the bees and chickens for a very long time, since I was on the Environmental Commission. And I've heard many, many, many hours of discussion about the issue. But what was important for me in all those discussions is that whatever we decide to do, it needs to be enforceable such that if people violate whatever ordinance we ended up creating, that the city had an ability to enforce such that that problem could be abated. And I think that when we did craft and approve those ordinances for both chickens and bees, I think we were able to do that. And otherwise, I would not have voted for them. And so, I can believe we have good, fair ordinances. I know the bee one, because of a lot of concerns people have with allergies, we took an extra step that does require notification of the neighbors prior to issuing a permit. And by the way, as of just a couple of weeks ago, not one single permit has been issued for anyone to keep bees in our city through that ordinance. And the chicken one is a little less restrictive, but it still has the same teeth in it as far as if there's somebody who's not keeping chickens properly, the city should be able and can enforce.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Where do you stand on short-term rentals such as home sharing in Torrance? And how will you address emerging policy challenges that the sharing economy and business models such as Airbnb and Uber present to the city of Torrance related to regulation and tax revenues? We're going to start with Mr. Eng.
I actually support small business. And I support moving into the 21st century. And I think, in general, both ideas should not be prohibited. So, I actually think they're good ideas because they allow small businesses to grow. Somebody estimated there's over a billion dollars of Airbnb. But it has to be done the right way. And I think part of the right way of doing it is to have the neighbors or all people actually put in, do input to how we should craft ordinances to allow this stuff instead of just having a prohibition on it. I think Uber is a little bit trickier because it automatically creates a lot of potential traffic. But I think it could be done with a properly crafted ordinance. And I believe in the growth of small business in Torrance. And those are two important possible growth areas.
Thank you. Mr. Sheikh.
Thank you. Short-term rentals, I believe, just like chicken and bees, I think we should have some kind of regulations to make it safer and make it inviting for the neighbors. For some neighbors, it's a big issue and some don't care. I was in a couple of City Council meetings where City Council did a great job in explaining and requested a study to be done and make sure if it's available and have the people involved and get the feedback from them. And I think it's very critical that we give some kind of guidance to the community so they follow and work with this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Camille DeGastino.
Well, I'm not for Airbnb simply because of the fact that we don't get any revenue from those rentals. And in regards to Uber, I love Uber, but we're not getting any revenue off of Uber either. Now, our taxi cabs that operate within the city of Torrance, they have to have licenses and permits. So, we do get revenue from the taxis. But we don't get any revenue from Uber serving our city. So, either one of those, if they don't produce some type of revenue for our city, I'm not really for them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Griffiths.
Just thank you. If you're a homeowner, I don't think you bought your house in Torrance expecting to have a hotel next to you. And that's how I feel about Airbnb as far as we don't, with that particular technology, your neighbor could suddenly have a hotel and have people coming in and out of the house all the time and uncontrollable things under the current situation. However, I'm not totally against the idea. I think with proper regulation, it may be able to be managed in a way that it will coexist in our environments. And so, I think it requires a lot further investigation. I don't think we should completely restrict or ban technologies like that. But I think we need to pay attention to how we can do that in a way such that it won't affect our neighborhoods in a negative way. And I do believe we should be moving forward into the 21st century and take advantage of technologies that are improving. But we need to make sure it's done on a fair and level playing field.
Thank you. Mr. Herring.
I think what Councilman Griffiths just referred to at the end, a fair and level playing field, is really what we should look at. As a rule, I'm opposed to government, big government and government being involved in all of our lives. And so, I support limited government. These two areas or these two businesses that are springing up now in the 21st century is something relatively new to Torrance homeowners. But it's one that is of a concern. So, I support what the council is doing in terms of studying this issue moving forward. With Uber, I'm concerned that it's a safety issue for, not only for the passengers, but for the driver themselves. And it is unregulated and it is not generating any revenue. Again, it's not a level playing field with all of our taxi and shuttle services that we currently have. And as far as a homeowner, I would not want to be having something like that next door to me all the time as far as rentals.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
I am also not a big fan of Airbnb at this time. Residential districts, R1 zones are exactly that. They're where people live, where they establish their families. They're not designed to run businesses. And it also has an impact on housing inventory. If you allow for Airbnb-type situations in many of the residential zones, then you're not going to have families moving in. You're just going to have people that want to buy these properties and start running businesses out of those properties. And people that want to buy a home, looking to buy a home to raise their family, that inventory is not going to be there for them, especially even for the workforce. As far as Uber goes, I have concerns about Uber and lack of regulations as it pertains to their drivers, vetting the drivers, insurance issues, who's responsible. It requires a lot of study.
Thank you. All right, next question. Considering the lengthy drought in the state, what local enhancements would you make to help ensure our water supply is sustainable? And I'm going to start with Mr. Sheikh.
You know, every 10 years or 15 years, we have to face this issue. And I think we have to meet with other cities and come up with a strategy that we can possibly. involve them and whatever we got here and what other cities have, come up with a plan to have some kind of reservoir, to have some kind of infrastructure in place that in the future, we don't have to face that. This has been going on for so many decades and decades, and we do that every 10 years. We need to have this problem resolved at a mass scale. We have to involve other South Bay region cities, and we make sure that we don't have to face that situation in future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rizzo?
Well, local enhancements on that is to develop our own water supplies, which we're currently doing now with the wellfills here in North Torrance. Another aspect we have locally, which many cities do not have, is retention ponds, where we're trying to capture that stormwater runoff and percolate that back down into aquifer to replenish the supplies that we're pulling out of our wellfills. Also, we kind of have a funny situation here in Torrance because much of Torrance is serviced by Torrance Water, but we do have an area in the city that's serviced by Cal Water. So we do need to work with that agency to develop strategies on drought-resistant landscaping, how can we save water, things of that nature, and work between those two agencies to make sure it's consistent citywide between those two agencies.
Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you. Torrance is really ahead of the curve on water. We have spent many years improving our water system, primarily involving our groundwater system. Matter of fact, compared to any other city in Southern California, I think our usage of groundwater is higher than most, which causes us to have less dependence on imported water, which means we're less impacted by the drought that affects the water sources from imported areas. Now, that puts us in a relatively good position. Not to say that we don't need to conserve and protect the resources that we have. I know since I've been on the council, we've made significant investments in improving our water infrastructure by additional groundwater wells to become even less dependent upon imported water. And in fact, we have one of our tremendous resources in our city. At our city yard, we have the desalter, go-water desalter, which creates 5 million gallons a day of fresh potable water for use here in our city in conjunction with the water replenishment district. That's been a big benefit to our city.
Thank you. Ms. Kimel D'Agostino?
Well, I can tell you, I live off of Osage, and that well that's being drilled on Delthorn Park is going to have a pipeline directly into the desalter, so I'm very excited about that. We do have other wells that we're drilling in other parts of the city. And also, we use recycled water for watering our plants that are along the median, so that, in that way, we are conserving water.
Thank you. And Mr. Eng?
Yeah, I think water is always going to be with us. Every 11 years, there's a sunspot cycle that creates cycles of drought and too much rain. I think it's very good that Torrance is using recycled water. We should expand that. I think we should make permanent the kinds of things that we've put in place during this drought, like giving people water credits for how much water you don't use. Then people are now used to that idea. I think those should be made permanent. I think more effort should be done for cooperation to take all the water that comes out of Hyperion that's put into the ocean and possibly refine that a little bit more and stick it back as ground recharge so that the wells that we do drill will be able to, you know, some distance away have the water. And so I think we're on the right track. We could do a little more, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Thank you. Eng and Mr. Herring?
Well, I want to commend what Mayor Pat Fury and the city council are currently doing to take some proactive stance against the drought that we're facing, and they're doing an excellent job. So I would just, as a councilman, just kind of fall right in on that pattern that they're already doing and encourage all of the residents to be reminded that we live in a desert. We're still in a drought. Yes, we do have a lot of good things already going for us with the wells that we have and water basins and the desalter plant that we have on yard. Our staff is being very proactive in this area. One of the things that would just encourage us to do is look at how we can better use runoff water, gray water, capture water, and to reward those who are really making an effort to save water and use it wisely and to penalize those who are not.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Okay, what should be done by the city council to address the increasing homeless problem in our city? We're going to start with Mr. Rizzo.
The homeless problem is increasing in the city of Torrance, but not to the degree it is in surrounding areas. One thing the city has done is we've formed the new social services commission to look at that issue, to provide information, clearinghouse, let's say, to government agencies and to the community as to what resources are available in dealing with homeless issue, whether it be veterans or individuals with mental illness, things of that nature, and what resources are available and direct them into those resources. Additionally, the city has, through zoning, established areas within the city where, if need be, we can establish some homeless shelters should they be needed.
Thank you. Mr. Eng?
Yeah, I think the social services commission, which is one of the newest commissions in the city of Torrance, is a wonderful addition, and it allows our police officers to do something besides arrest homeless people. And again, so many of the homeless people are veterans, so many have mental issues, and sometimes they're both together because of PTSD, and others have drug problems. And they've been released, you know, on the streets because of these AB-109. I think that's increased our homeless problem, but I think these are great ways to help attack that. I also would be in favor of doing more coordination with the other local communities, some of which have already a lot more services, like there's a new veterans complex up near UCLA. So I think more coordination with other cities would also help.
Thank you. Ms. Kimel D'Agostino?
Well, this is one of the topics that we were discussing in Washington DC with our elected representatives. And some of the things that we had worked with them on were restoring funding for housing and homeless programs to pre-sequestration levels. Another thing was to create some more affordable housing options and support innovative change to end veterans homelessness and grant states and local agencies more flexibility. So these are some of the programs at the federal level that we've been attacking, and I think you're going to be seeing some federal assistance in addition to state assistance that will help our cities and also our new social services commission.
Thank you. Mr. Sheikh?
Thank you. Social Services Commission is definitely a good step towards the resolution of this issue. However, I dearly believe that we need to involve state and also we need to get some federal funding for this problem. There are some of the folks that they have mental issues, although some of them that I have found out they have their houses, but for some reason, for mental capability, they just don't want to go back to their home. They're still homeless. They still are outside on the street. So we need help from state as well as federal level. And again, our community service, we spend about 6% of money. Maybe we can contribute in that as well, but we need help from federal and state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
As a candidate for city council in 2014 and talking with our residents and walk-in precincts, one of the things that I became aware of is that we do not have a commission for veterans. We did not have a commission for veterans and to address some of these concerns of homelessness with the veterans. And so in November 2014, I went before the council, and I asked the mayor and the city council if they would consider establishing a veterans commission. Well, I'm happy today that we do have a veterans commission with our social service commission, and this is one of the areas that they can address. The other thing is that our police department is doing an outstanding job. The other day, my wife and I was going to breakfast at Hofstut, and she noticed a woman seemed homeless with a shopping cart and it seemed like it had fallen on the street when her cart was took over. She immediately called the police department and reported the situation, and almost within minutes, they were there on the scene to help that woman.
That's fine. Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you. Last year, the city council approved an addition to the police force to give mental health team extra capabilities to deal with people with mental health issues, which typically are frequently homeless people. That's a nice tool that we have that we really have never had before. As a matter of fact, the city really doesn't have staff with any expertise on dealing with homeless. So the other benefit that we've done is we've added, as Susan said, the social service commission, which will deal as part of its charter to determine ways that we can help the homeless better in our community. So I think we are moving in the right direction to address this problem. I think the third thing that we can do moving forward is to lobby our state to provide us more assistance in how to deal with that, whether it's financial assistance, whether it's trained personnel. Just give us the guidance that we need to deal with something that we're not used to dealing with.
Thank you. All right, next question. Torrance is an important industrial, governmental, and residential center in the South Bay area, yet to some it has the reputation of being boring. What ideas do you have to make Torrance more fun? Eng, I'm going to start with you.
I love living in Torrance. Torrance is a great city to live in. I think that we need to work with, discover Torrance more, make Torrance a destination city, and do a better job of marketing. All of the things that we have here in Torrance, from our beaches to our businesses, our malls, shopping downtown, our parks and recreation, our homes, Old Town Torrance. Torrance is a beautiful place, and I don't think that it's boring at all. I've visited many other cities as military veterans around the world even, and I tell you what, I'm happy to come back home to Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Okay, Mr. Griffiths, your answer?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I don't think Torrance is boring at all. I think that we've gotten a bum rap about that. Matter of fact, we've got a great cultural arts programs in our city. We've got a very well-kept secret with our beach. Maybe that works to our benefit that we know about it and maybe the other people don't, so it's more for us to use by ourselves. The other thing that we're trying to do is we're bringing back some of the things that were cut. We're trying to bring back fireworks and those types of things that are a nice gathering for our community to have a community be able to get together. And I'd love to see more of those kind of programs where maybe we have jazz concerts or something like that where we put on a jazz festival or something like that in our community to help bring our community together, have some fun. And those are the kind of things that a lot of people say, well, the city shouldn't be spending money on those kind of things, but I think we should. I think it's a worthwhile investment to help bring our community together and to do some fun things, but I don't think we're boring.
Thank you. And Mr. Rizzo?
I would agree. I don't think we're boring. It's definitely not the disco days of the 80s. There were a lot of nightclubs throughout the city, and you want to go out for clubbing it for the night, and you go dancing all night long. But Torrance does have a lot of things to offer individuals and community. We do have the beach. We do have our theaters. We have community theaters. We do have some of the events that are sponsored in Old Torrance by Chef Schaefer. And a lot of those events bring in people from the surrounding area, and it is an issue of marketing that we let not only our residents know these things are going on in the community, but individuals within the South Bay, make them aware of what Torrance has to offer.
Thank you. Okay, what ideas do you have to improve the Redondo Beach Boulevard corridor as well as the section of Crenshaw Boulevard that is north of Artesia Boulevard? And we're going to start with Mr. Griffiths.
You know, I don't have a specific plan for doing anything with those things. Obviously, the top of the issue has always been our infrastructure. We need to make sure our streets, our sidewalks are attractive. That right there by itself creates a sense of good feeling where businesses and residences then feel more pride in that area when their streets and sidewalks look and feel better. So I know that those are issues that are really important that we should be doing in those areas specifically, but in any area that has been neglected for many, many years. So I think that infrastructure in general is a key to any reenlightenment of any particular area.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
That's a good question, and I don't have a specific plan for that, so I'm not going to try to give you one, but I think that it's something that we need to look at. I believe it should be a part of, it's not a part of our five-year strategic plan that the city has, and we do have one. And if it's not, I'll look at incorporating that. So that's an area that I'd like to study and do more research on. Thank you. Good question.
Thank you. Ms. Kimel D'Agostino?
Well, I want to see us ramp up some programs in McMaster Park when that gets going again for seniors. And also, I think we need to maybe expand our library in North Torrance because we don't really have a good library system up here in North Torrance, and I believe that you residents need that.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo?
It is a good question. A lot of the focus has been on the corridor for many years. It would require us to take a look at those specific corridors within the city and get some input from the community, get the input from the citizens that live in that area. What do they want to see in these corridors in North Torrance? And once we can establish what they would like to see, then we can start moving forward and laying some plans to accomplish those goals.
Thank you. Mr. Eng?
Yeah, if it's a matter of the streets, I mean, that's easier to fix by just planning to fix them, but I absolutely think that Torrance should much more, get the citizens much more involved in neighborhoods. When I basically formed citizen groups to oppose something that was inappropriate for our neighborhood, that probably could have been fixed a little easier by having the city talk to the neighborhood and see. We should, in our future, plan more things for more different neighborhoods instead of having one size fits all. And I think we should expand just the question of Redondo Beach corridor to the whole city and what's planned for any section of the city. Poll the population, talk to the planning commission, have the people talk to the planning commission, get a community consensus, offer some alternatives, do some planning instead of being reactive, have the planning commission offer alternatives, and then you'll get a better response from everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sheikh?
Thank you. I like to involve experts and go and have some study done. These two corridors have been neglected. I think it's time to invest some money to get the study done. For any type of work to be done, it's very critical that we go and talk to the experts. It's very important that we talk to the residents and the community as well, but if they have a plan based on facts and provide some benefits, that will be communicated and will be helpful to the community, and then we should go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and final question. What is your favorite restaurant in North Torrance and why? Mr. Eng?
I can't answer that because my wife and I, we home-cook all our food, and if I go to restaurants nowadays, I often get sick.
Okay, Ms. Kimel D'Agostino?
Well, since they closed Flossy's, the next restaurant that I like to go to is The Loft because they have a lot of Hawaiian food, and I'm really into Hawaiian food.
Thank you. Mr. Sheikh?
I like local places. We go with, quite often, over there, and I also like Chick-fil-A. These are two restaurants.
Good. Mr. Griffiths?
I too like The Loft. I love their pork. It's fantastic. And the other one that I like is the new one, Hofstang Brewery. I think that's a great 10190 that I think they're doing a great job.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rizzo?
I eat at quite a few restaurants over the years and working my shifts. It depends on what shift I was working at the time. But I used to love to eat at Romero's. Now it's Josie's, I believe, on a great job, but I haven't eaten at Josie's in a while, but I do like to eat at The Loft. Good food. Let's see, what else have we got? I ate at Norm's quite a lot. Breakfast, country touch, 10190 is always good. Breakfast, Country Touch, 10190th is always good. And I'm trying to think. Get a good breakfast at the Roadhouse as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Herring?
Breakfast is at, good breakfast at the Country Kitchen, 10190th, is that the country? Okay. And then my wife and I eat a lot at the, at Coco's. Coco's, and I like Chick-fil-A as well, and Steve's, and delicious pastrami sandwiches at Steve's, chili cheese fries that I shouldn't be eating.
Okay, that concludes our questions, and at this time, each candidate will have an opportunity to do a closing statement, and you will have one minute. And we're gonna start with two minutes. Oh, they, you all didn't use your yellow card, so you get two minutes, okay? Okay, we're gonna start with Mr. Sheikh.
Thank you. It was a family dream to come to the Torrens. We, as a family, used to dream of coming into the city of Torrens and have a house in here. And I believe that was July the 10th, the Friday, when we got the key of our new house in North Torrens, in July. It was like a Christmas in July. The school of Torrens, the neighborhoods, the friendship, it's just amazing. I believe I have the perseverance, I have the hard work, I have something in me that when I give something back to the community, that community gave me a lot. I believe I am an American dream. My story is an American success story. I came in this country with $600 in my pocket, and after that, I earned my MBA degrees. My hard work, my perseverance, is because of people like you, they gave me a lot. There are quite a few people that made difference in my life from the city of Torrens, and I believe I can give back something to the city. The city of Torrens, I call the city of dreams and a dream city, and I believe I have something to give back to this community. And I will do everything possible to work hard for the city, to work hard for you, to make a difference. I believe I have something to give back to the community, the qualification, the education, the professional experience, that I will give everything for this city, the city that gave me life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eng?
I'm going to use a little portion of my two minutes. I've been part of citizens groups and I, to help stop inappropriate things from coming to our neighborhood, and I think I always say the devil's in the details, so I'd like to do a public service announcement. This concerns the refinery. There is a restart window starting this Saturday from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I have a little flyer on that. They say, "Oh, look, it's not gonna exceed state standards, it just exceeds all our local standards because the whole state isn't as densely populated area as our south coast region." So it makes it look good, but it's not good. So if you see anything you don't like, please call these numbers. The AQMD and ExxonMobil, they have to keep track of these things and report them. When they don't hear from the people, they think everything's okay. If you don't like those smells, call these numbers. I have a flyer out for this. And I've been a Torrens resident, space industry scientist for 35-plus years. I'm running for Torrens City Council because I believe the city council needs a scientist on board. There are no scientists on the city council, there are no other scientists running for city council. I'm running because of the massive explosion at the refinery. It's something that never should have happened in the first place. I think I'm one of the few people who can really work with the refinery to help develop a path forward that is protective of the public health. I'm not for closing down the refinery, but I think there are many things that can be done, the devil's in the details, I can help find them and craft a path forward that I don't think any other candidate can help do. I ask for your vote June 7th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kimel D'Agostino?
Okay, why would you want to consider me as your next city council member? Well, I try to attend every single city council meeting, and I have done so for the past four years, so I know what's going on in the city. In fact, I've addressed the city council several times on issues and fought for our residents. For example, I fought to save the Commission on Aging at the Ad hoc Committee Review Board several years ago, and I've worked to continue funding for the senior taxi program and also the senior tour program, which were on the budget chop list. I'm an active volunteer in the community, and I'm in the Japanese-American Citizens League, the Koshua Sister City Organization, the Torrens Historical Society, the Rose Float Association, the Del Amo Rotary, and many other organizations. In fact, if I'm elected to the city council, I am committed to strengthening our public safety and city services, balancing our budget and increasing reserves, continuing smart economic growth in a business-friendly climate, attracting quality businesses that bring new, good-paying jobs to Torrens, promoting affordable programs for seniors, veterans, and children. The outlook for Torrens is bright, but we need the right leadership and experience to grow upon our successes. I'm proud to say that I've been endorsed by California State Senator Ben Allen, the Torrens Police Officers Association, the Firefighters Association, Ask Me, Mayor Fury, and the National Women's Political Coalition. So I believe that I'm a very qualified person to be on your city council, and I want to bring business to Torrens.
Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you. I thought you were gonna forgive me. I wanted to just take a few minutes of my, or a few moments of my spare time to talk about my priorities. Public safety is one of the top two reasons residents and businesses choose Torrens, and everyone wants to know that they're well-protected and served in case they need assistance. And this has and will continue to be high on my list. As I've already talked about tonight, infrastructure is really important to me. We've neglected our infrastructure through the recession, and we really need to get caught back up on that, so that's high on my priority list. And I'm really proud to say that last year we voted to enhance over 15% of the asphalt in Torrens, and we plan to do that again this coming year at a minimum. Our business community is also a key differentiator for our community. We have a diverse business community that keeps the city resilient, and even in the most difficult times, Torrens survived the Great Recession so well, in large part due to our great mix of businesses, retail, commercial, and industrial. So it's very important to keep a focus in our business community. I want to thank everyone who attended this evening's forum. I want to thank the moderators and the North Torrens Homeowners Association for putting this on. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for their willingness to put themselves forward for consideration for public office. As your Torrens City Council member, I do attend every council meeting. I haven't missed one yet. I have worked hard to meet the needs of our residents and businesses and balance our financial responsibilities. Sometimes that means making tough decisions, and sometimes that meant standing up for what I knew was the right thing to do. I'm not a political animal. My highest ambition has only been to serve this community that has meant so much to me and my family, and to share the quality of life I have enjoyed here in Torrens with this generation and the next. I hope you will join me in making Torrens an even better place to live and work. I have a very extensive endorsement list. You can find that on my website. I'm endorsed by all the Torrens School Board members and now, most recently, the USBA Unified Small Business Alliance. For more details, please visit my website, ilikemike16.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the North Torrens Homeowners Association for sponsoring this event and all that have attended here this evening. Thank you for your time and your interest. As your current council member, I look forward to continuing to serve you and your concerns. I have the proven ability to confront tough issues head-on. Most importantly, I have the integrity Torrens needs in a city council member. My goal is not to create a civic legacy nor use this position as stepping stone for higher office. I seek reelection to make certain your voices continue to be heard. My primary focus is to ensure that Torrens remains a vibrant and thriving community to live, work, and play. In my career, I've demonstrated the character and perseverance necessary to get the job done. My personal commitment, fiscal responsibility, and tradition of service to this community speaks for itself. I'm proud to say that I've devoted my life to serving the city of Torrens. Please join me along with the current and former mayors, current and former council members, and members of the Torrens School Board, local businesses, and residents in re-electing Jeff Rizzo on June 7th. Remember, a vote for Jeff Rizzo means ensuring effective, efficient, and transparent government in the city of Torrens. For more information on how you can help, please go to my website at www.rizoforcouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. In 2014, as a traffic commissioner, I ran for a Torrens City Council and received almost 5,000 votes. A little short to get elected, but I determined to learn more, even more about my city. And so I applied for and was appointed to the planning commission by the city council. And as a planning commissioner, I have learned a great deal about the city of Torrens. Now I'm asking for your vote, June 7th. I may not be your first vote, I may not be your second vote, I gladly receive your third As your council member, I will continue the tradition of the past and current leaders in making Torrens a world-class city while maintaining that hometown feel. I will ensure that Torrens maintains a balanced budget while offering first-class services to her residents, provide outstanding public safety and security, and maintain an excellent fire department, provide a healthy environment for her youth and seniors, recruit and retain world-class businesses in Torrens. It's time, as I said, that we roll out the red carpet and cut the red tape for businesses, and to ensure that ExxonMobil does all that it should do in order to keep our citizens safe while remaining a viable business. I wrote an article to the editorial in the Daily Breeze, and in that article, I maintained that they should hire an independent safety monitor that now should be paid by some of that $250 million in fines, and this monitor should be independent and should report to the community quarterly reports. There's not a credibility yet.
Thank you very much.
If you can all give our candidates a round of applause. I just wanna thank all of you for coming this evening and taking the time out of your evenings, and also wanna thank the candidates for coming as well, and wanna wish the best of luck to all of you. And we have one announcement. Lynn?
We have a few. Those of you who are not part of our homeowners association, if you're complaining or thinking about it, on your way out, pick up one of the flyers that we have, one of our newsletters that just came out. Also, those of you who are members and your membership's up, it's up at the end of June, so if you wanna renew tonight, you won't have to mail it, put a stamp on it, so we're here.
Great, well, thank you again for all coming, and have a safe drive home.